At seven o'clock, call to order the regular meeting here at the City Council, Ranspass, six hundred West Cleveland Boulevard, on December first, twenty fourteen, seven P M. Please stand up for the invocation.
Laura, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day, also for the Thanksgiving weekend. Hopefully, everybody had a good holiday. I want you to please to wish your blessings upon all those that are ill and not feeling well, all the ones that have passed on, and the family members that are taken care of. Please guide us, watch over us as a council and as a community. May we all work together for the same good cause. May us watch our services that our public workspeople do, our fire department, our city manager, city crews, our whole city of Ranspass family, to finish that up. Please give us the will to do what's coming up, to be able to spread the word, and get ready for the uncommon season of the Christmas season. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This brings to item three, the consent agenda. All of the following items, the consent agenda considered to be routine by City Council, will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the councilor or so requests. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed, and the consent agenda will be considered separately. We're gonna have items A, B, C, D, and E.
Are there any questions on any of these?
Yes, on E, it should be ordinance number twenty fourteen forty ninety-six.
You got that, Avon. Is there anybody else that might have something? Any corrections? If not, we can get a motion for approval.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
With the corrections?
With corrections.
All in fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye. This, which I'd like to have the citizen comments, item number four. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to state your business. The floor is now open if anybody has anything to say.
My name is Carol Salinas. I'm a resident of Ranspass Pass, and I just wanted to mention, I think it's coming up on the agenda for tonight, that the water district is raising our rates, and I would just like to remind you that our rates, my personal water bill went up about fifteen dollars a month, three months ago, when the rates were raised and the different fees were imposed. And I understand that now that the district is going up on the rates, you need to recover that somewhere, but I do hope you remember some of us that are unlimited budgets on, you know, our rate. We don't get cost of living raises like some people, but anyway. And I would also like to mention, I'm looking forward to seeing the Christmas lights in town, and I hope some of the businesses will participate and decorate all those businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything?
My name's Steve Warren, live at six seventeen North Houston, and I know it's not the mowing season right now, so I'm sure all of our guys are relaxed a little bit with that, but at the corner of Pryor and Houston, there's a lot right there on that corner that hasn't been mowed in over two years. They mowed it like right at the curb, but nothing in the back, and it's getting really tall.
Pryor, Pryor and what, sir?
Houston, North Houston. Yes, sir.
Is it an undeveloped lot?
No, it's a blank lot. There's nothing in there.
So, or this isn't a plan of undeveloped lots? If that were the case, I'd clear out the entire north side and, you know, the rest would be done.
Right.
That's why we're only seeing the right way down.
Does that answer? Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything?
I'm kinda curious of, um, one thing, why, when my son passed away, it took him three hours to get him to a hospital, and I believe it was like almost half an hour to get to the house.
What's your name, sir?
Joseph Killip.
Joseph Killip.
Yeah, I beat my son to the hospital from, almost from San Antonio, in the car, and he was halo flighted. What took so long?
What's your address?
Seven forty-six West Lot.
Which lot? And when was the date of the deed?
Uh, the seventeenth, I believe, eighteenth?
I am sorry for the...
And, um, and, uh, dogs by the cemetery, they come right up into the cemetery and attack ya. There's about three pit bulls that come onto the cemetery property, and they, we were literally twelve hundred feet into the cemetery, and they come from where their house is into the, and you have to leave. And you call the non-emergency number, and they say, well, there's nothing they can do about it, or they have to send somebody from Rockport to Portland.
Which cemetery?
It's a Perview?
Perview.
Perview, which is in the county.
It's county. Who won the county? Can we, uh, no?
Commissioner.
Mr., or Commissioner? Okay. We'll direct that towards them, sir. I'm sorry again.
Yeah. Is halo flight even in town, or where are they coming from?
Halo flight is a nonprofit that's out of the west side of Portage, Christie, off Highway forty-four and Chatham Ranch area.
Even after I drove two hours, I had to beg this hospital to just put him back in an ambulance and get him here. And still, even after I made that two-hour drive, he put it off to where he needed to be faster.
Right.
But I had to listen to that, and get Malley with me on the phone.
Halo flight?
Yeah. They wanted to...
When you get done, we can get your contact info. I'll look into it in the morning and see what information you can get. Okay. And it's still nothing happened?
Right.
Yeah, that's ridiculous. Again, sorry for not well, sir.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
When he brought up the dog situation, uh, we have a lot of dogs running around in that neighborhood, but yet we can't get a hold of anybody, and they seem to be out every weekend. And yet, when I call the non-emergency number, it goes to the police department, and they say, well, they're not gonna come out unless it's some kind of emergency, but the dog's out there every weekend, you know, because that's when I'm home.
Right.
And they're still there every weekend, and then nothing ever seems to happen with them. And...
We've already addressed that as far as weekend coverage. We have two animal control, so what they're gonna be doing is splitting up, but one of them right now is out on personal medical.
Okay.
So, we're down to one, but if it's, if it is emergent or persistent issue, they do come out on the weekends, and they have come out on the weekends to...
The lady that, when you called that emergency number, the dispatcher, I guess, she says they won't come out unless it's an emergency, unless the dog is being aggressive, period. She won't even contact them.
I'll double check that practice, but we have a way of notifying them quite regularly, and they might say if it's persistent, we do make an effort to contact them, and therefore when they come out, we find them.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, exactly. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything for our citizen comments? Well, if not, then I'll close it, our comments, and we're gonna move to item number five, which is gonna be considering act on the ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Ranspass, Texas, combination tax and limited pledge revenue certificates obligation. So, this was cover a series of two thousand, twenty fifteen, providing the payment of the said certificates by the living, and ad valorem tax upon the taxable property within the city, and for other security certificates by a lien on a pledge and pledge revenues of the system, providing the terms and the conditions of the said certificates, and resolving other matters of the incident related to issuance, authorizing execution of a paying agent, register agreement, and the purchase of investment letter, complying with the requirements imposed by the letter and representations previously executed by the depository trust company, authorizing execution of any necessary engagement or agreements with the city financial advisor and/or bond counsel, and providing an effective date. Yes, sir. It's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. A mouthful. I apologize for you having to read that. My name's Andrew Friedman, Southwest Securities. Have good news this evening. We've received four bids, and I've got a handout with those results. We received those bids this morning at eleven A M. We had four bidders, winning bid one point eight-nine percent from T I B, the Independent Bankers' Bank, which is a regional bank that's down here in Texas. They work with a lot of local community banks, where they have relationships and corresponding relationships where they can, a local bank could buy the bonds from them or place them with them. So, we received a very good rate. If you remember when I was here, month and a half ago, for the notice of intention resolution, the preliminary numbers we looked at at that point were two percent. So, we beat that by eleven basis points. So, the total interest on these ten-year certificates of obligations is slightly lower than what we were anticipating, which is always the goal. So, we're very pleased with that. The purchaser didn't have any costs, their own purchaser's counsel, they're not gonna charge an annual paying agent registrar fee. As you see, some of these other bidders had different costs, their own attorneys, annual fees that they would charge the city, so cost savings there. So, the total interest, the city will be paying back around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, a little bit better than we were expecting, so we're very pleased with that. Behind page two, and this'll, you'll remember this page from the prior notice of intention resolution, these C O's are going to be paid from four different sources. There's the fire truck that's going to be paid for from the fire safety assessment fees, drainage district equipment's gonna be paid for from drainage funds, utility fund equipment is gonna be paid for from the utility fund revenues available for debt service, and then fleet vehicles are gonna be paid for from the ad valorem taxes. And again, those fleet vehicles, we've structured their individual debt service so that there won't be a tax rate increase in order to take on those fleet vehicles. So, we've structured the debt around different circumstances to help structure it in a way that's feasible for the city, that doesn't cause any hardship or tax rate increase. And then again, that because the interest rate came in low, we were able to beat what we were looking at before, so we're very pleased with that. The full number run is behind that page. I'm happy to go into as much detail as you like. The funds will be in hand on January sixth. That's when the funds will be delivered into the city's account, and that'll be for two million, two hundred and forty to fund all four of the projects, different vehicles, and so forth. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but we're very, very pleased, especially having to get bids Monday after the Thanksgiving holiday. I'm sure everybody had kind of a rough Monday after having a few days off, so we're happy to get those bids in, and people are at their desks, and got us a good rate.
That's awesome.
That translates to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings.
That's beautiful.
Very good. We also got other good news from our other credit reps on our legal purchases. At one point in time, we had some good friendship. We were cash-based only. Now, we've got people coming in wanting to do this, and offering credit, and we may translate this money into our good deal, legal purposes, and leverage what we have in our good credit.
That's a good deal. We're moving up.
That's right.
We've come a long way, maybe.
That's a good job to everybody at hand. Congratulations on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
We made money on a safe bet. We tried to call it a lot of fun.
Which in turn, is grateful to the community.
Yes, we've been, what is the benefactor of this?
Yes.
Our community?
Sure is. So, item five, do I hear a proposal in favor?
You have to read all of that?
I think we're good.
Yes, the fine, we've been, is it, what is the benefactor of this?
Yes.
Our community?
Sure is. So item five, do I hear a proposal in favor?
You have to read all of that? Good.
I think we're good on that.
I move that we, uh, authorize the, the issuance of the City of Aransas Pass combination tax and limited pledge revenue certificates of obligation, series two thousand fifteen.
Second the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Be careful.
Just wait up on that.
This will bring us to item six, consider an act on the purchase of five fiberglass flagpoles and five flags for the total of seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars from the Wapo Flagpole and installation at the Veterans Memorial Park.
Council, that's, uh, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So, uh, LaBelle is really a local flagpole, has a new construction.
Question, Sylvia, uh, do we, are we buying any extra flags? And, and, uh, well, I mean, like, in addition to, because I, I, when I was flying a flag, it would last about two or three months before it got in pretty bad shape.
We are not, that is, like, three by five, uh, I mean, we're in Air Force, and four by six US flag.
Thank you. Sure.
And, uh, are we gonna be putting them up, taking them down every day, or is it gonna be something done through the vets, or have we looked into any of that?
I think we have life.
They're going to live, they'll be, they'll be twenty-four.
Ms. Alinas, come on up.
Until I moved here, I actually thought that there were only four divisions of the armed forces, but there are in fact five, the Coast Guard.
Coast Guard, right.
And I'm wondering if they shouldn't be representative, since they are a very integral part of our community right here.
That's a good point, ma'am. What can we do, uh, about the other pole?
Well, Marines is part of the air force, I mean, Marines is part of the Navy, so we could modify, I mean, we could modify the motion, say not to exceed ten thousand dollars on the wire.
Coast Guard? Is there any other question? You got Coast Guard, you got the Navy?
They're not the same, they're, they're the same as for our line of department.
Nah. My brother-in-law differ on that one, too, yeah. And don't wanna disrespect anybody that's doing what they're doing for us.
No, not at all.
Yeah. Okay, so, do I hear a motion for approval with the change?
I make a motion that we purchase the fiberglass flagpoles and flags not to exceed ten thousand dollars from LaBelle, flagpoles.
Two seconds. Ram.
I'm sorry, two seconds?
Ram.
I'm, Ram and Billy.
Ram and Billy, but Ram will take it, fly over. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This brings us to item seven, consider an act on approval of a survey of Combron Harbor to be conducted by RVE Incorporated for the cost of, uh, one hundred thirty-seven thousand and four hundred ninety-two dollars.
Uh, Mayor Pat Medito is here on behalf of RVE, it really is a continuation of the bond project to get the harbor, uh, running marketable, all in size of the national land development that we have. Uh, there's, there's a lot going on in there, surveys, it's, it's, you know, this has never been pinned, we've just been giving the proper description of the land footage, so, uh, there's, there's a good amount of work to go through, some surveys, um, subsurface surveys, again, finalizing the bulkhead, all of the boundaries, so, i- it's a pretty substantial level of effort. And this is only part one of three, we're gonna come back to you with parts two and three, that, um, are not as high, unless this one just takes the most effort.
What, what would we get for, uh, to show, like a timeline to get the first part done?
Uh, Pat, do you want to do it?
Probably get started right after the first of the year, I think this is a three-month or so level of effort.
Okay.
Well, Pat, I, I need to caveat that, because Pat says that based on our staff being able to provide some records, and, I mean, he'll tell you that a lot of our stuff is missing, we've gotta go to outside sources and.
And sort of beg for our own material, so, as long as we can provide what he needs, it's a three-month level of effort, but.
Just a rough timeline.
I just want council not to crucify me if we don't finish in three months.
Okay, three months and one week.
Thank you, sir.
There's your December eighteenth day, let's pay back for this morning. I, we were in a meeting this morning, and, uh, I don't have any room on my calendar anymore, every day in December has a dot on it, and, and they didn't believe me until I went to schedule and it said, no more, there's no more time.
No moss.
No moss available, so, we gave Donna an extra two days, I think, to finish her assignment, so if Pat gives me one week, there's my karma. Well, I make a motion that we, um, approve the survey of Combron Harbor to be conducted by RVE, in, for the cost of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-two, in three months and a week, I'm just kidding.
Second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let us bring us to item number eight, consider an act on memorandum of understanding with the Rockport Wi-Fi and the City of Aransas Pass.
Um, well, Mayor, it's, uh, it's no secret that we have limited connectivity in the area. Rockport Wi-Fi, in exchange for space on our towers and some of our area, uh, structures, has offered to provide service to, uh, the City of Aransas Pass at limited or no cost. In exchange, they have space on the towers, and we'll be able to provide cloud, uh, Wi-Fi coverage in some of those areas. Specifically, we're looking to make some of our buildings hotspots, like being able to go into the library, like being able to go at the water department, like being able to go at any one of our city facilities and have, um, residents be able to, to log in. So I do have sand dollar security here, if you guys have any questions for him, or Jeff is available as well.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, this is, um, this is just for city, or is it gonna be for residents to be able? Initially, it's for our city, I know he plans to expand for resident coverage at some point. Um, at this point, it's, Jeff, you wanna talk about our limited connectivity, if we have something that goes down, or we have issues, this is sort of a backup to.
It's, uh, it's just another way to get an internet signal to some of our remote locations, uh, for example, uh, the, um, wastewater treatment plant has no internet connection out there, and the aquatic center, right now we're using G-TED, and I think it costs us a hundred fifty dollars a month, or maybe two hundred?
Approximately.
And, uh, this will, uh, actually give us a better connection at, uh, at no cost. So that right there will save us, um, in the, in that.
Sure.
So it's, um, it's, I think it's a good deal, um, and it also will eventually, and Mike can talk about this, um, will eventually give us another option in town for residents who want a low-cost, um, internet connection via wireless technology.
It is a short two-year agreement, um, they can't quite get on the tower yet, our tower is fixing to go under massive rehab, so.
Is there any other questions from council?
And, and this would also be followed up by a, a written lease, um, is that correct? And I think Kevin is wanting to do a, a written lease, um, showing, you know, pat protecting both of us, there would be a zero sum, um, type of, type of.
There's the guy selling it right there? He's out, yeah, sure, sure, come on up.
Yes, please.
He just drove in from Victoria at eighty-nine miles an hour.
Still shaking. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, Sylvia, I appreciate your kindness, Jeff, too, for sure. Well, Rockport Wi-Fi definitely endeavors to provide internet service low-cost quickly. And we're hoping to roll out in early fifteen. But it will take some planning that hasn't been completed yet to truly offer target dates. We're endeavoring to provide quality service to the city initially, and then at that point, we'll have meetings and conspire.
You guys provide service in Rockport right now?
Yes, ma'am, we have, probably, no, we have a significant number of clients and the cus- and the business is growing in a healthy fashion, and our prices are almost stupid cheap.
That's good, that's good.
And you guys already have the same deal with City of Rockport, right?
Yes, sir, we do, we negotiated in the last six, eight months, it's been, it's been an ongoing process, but it's been formalized recently, and we're, we're happy to be where we are with the good City of Rockport, too. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Well, then, with that said and done, do I hear a motion for approval for item number eight, or disapproval?
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Rockport Wi-Fi and the City of Aransas Pass.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. I bring us to item number nine, consider an act on amendment section three point three, the attendance, subitem B four of the city personnel policy to reflect proposed changes to the current fire department paid schedule.
Yeah, this is just a cleanup item in the personnel policy, uh, I have never, until this day, do not understand the firefighter schedule. I refer to it as a Chinese firecracker drill, because I have no way of understanding why you would bring in staff to work five hours and offset a pay period. This is really just following, um, state standards, standardizing the pay, so that folks receive the same amount in a month, um, in a month allocation, as opposed to, um, right now, what they, they call it a short check, they work a full check. Then there's a short check every, I don't know, Ricky can tell you, because, because again, I don't understand it, every six weeks, there's a short check, and they, somebody's gotta come in early, somebody's gotta leave late. It's a, it's a bookkeeping and, and staff nightmare, uh, to come, some of our firefighters, uh, work and, uh, live in Corpus, and to drive to work a few hours just to even out a paycheck, doesn't make any sense to me. So, um, it is just an attempt to standardize all of that and get a, a normal pay period for them that's standard throughout the year.
Ricky, y'all good with this?
Yes, sir.
They're the ones that will tar and feather me if you guys don't approve them.
I just figured I'd ask since he's here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, all of our cars agree to, to work, whatever way it is on a short check, as they say, is they'd be working a ninety-six hour on one week, or one paycheck, and a hundred twenty, two other paychecks. So they're actually getting a short, a short check on, on one of them, but it's all evening out, it's, at the same as the end of the year.
Right.
Uh, if we're not going over our budget or anything like that, there, it all, it figures out, we figured it out several different ways, and everybody agreed, because, like I said, they had to come in for five hours on a Tuesday.
To travel.
And, you know, if they've got something planned, they can't, they can't plan it with their kids or anything else. So this is why we, all of them agree to do it this way here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions from council, any cats?
No.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item nine?
Well, I make a motion that we amend section three point three, attendance, subitem B four, for the fire department pay schedule.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This brings us to item ten, consider an act on a long-term Combron Harbor lease agreement with Richard Prometto, underwater services.
All right, Mayor and Council, Mr. Prometto approached the city about, uh, leased space along that area, that, that boat is now gone, uh, we, we processed eviction proceedings. No sooner was the boat gone, we had an offer on, on the spot from a local, uh, and so Richard's here to answer any questions. The proposed lease rates are, uh, included in the council packet, um, there is a substantial amount of investment that's gonna need to go into the site, um, we calculated that over the first five-year period, about fifty-six thousand dollars, and that is just a rough, uh, estimate. Over a ten-year period, he's easily looking at about ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, and so the price per linear foot is the standard that we've started with down there, we have given a discount for those improvements, and leads us to the annual rents that you see in the initial five-year term.
Mr. Prometto, what do you expect to put, uh, put down there?
Well, I have a, a couple crew boats, so they service the offshore platforms and ships that are at the anchorage, we, we run cargo offshore. And, um, I would like to utilize this property for my boats, and initially, I would like to set up a privacy fence along the roadside, and, and that hill that's, that's, uh, off of the road, when you come up the hill and you make a, make a left to go down. Down the road, I'd like to secure it, just in the past couple of days, I've been walking on it, I'm noticing just there's a lot of trash down there right now from people, because the boats have been gone, and I was, I also helped move the boat that was parked there over to the shipyard, so it didn't fall out. I've been a resident of this town for thirty-four years, um, I've, um, started my business on Combron Harbor where Traller Doors used to be, and I've continued to move on, and I've been beneficial to this community, and this is a me, this is a big thing for me to come back.
Right.
I'm located on ten sixty right, ten sixty-nine right now, and my boats are in another town. And I like the idea of being able to put everything in, right around that, and everything's accessible to me, if we should go offshore, we can get groceries, we can get supplies, and we can head out to the golf if we should have to. Um, I've done, um, things for the town in benefit in many ways, being here.
Right.
My kids have gone to this town, I wanna stay here. I see, the bulkhead has a lot of issues, and which I didn't, didn't see until I started walking closer and closer, there's a lot of, uh, subsidence that's underneath there, a lot of the sand is washed out through the bulkhead, and, um, there's breaks in the bulkhead, and it's caused the washout to occur. I can't build on the foundation that's there right now. And, um, I, right now, I'm, I'm, would like just to propose putting some Conex boxes down there in order to get some temporary, um, setup for me, in order to operate out of this dock facility that's there right now. And then as I can, I have to address, um, there's like eight feet of bulkhead, about a hundred and seventy-something feet of, of the, uh, of the dock, but in the area near the bulkhead, uh, a lot of those paths that were like a walkway, they have dropped. And, um, I would like to address that, so, first, I would like to take care of the outside and make the repairs to those, and then I'll, whatever repairs we can do of, of trying to stop the, uh, the cracks in the bulkhead. There's, there's, uh, hydraulic cements that we can use, and whatever's, whatever's, whatever was recommended, I'll try to go with in order to stop that, that's my first, first step. The second would be in order to try to solve the sidewalk from caving in further, and either I may have to address removing it, breaking it up.
Right.
And, and then deal with what's below, whether the bulkhead is falling out, or it needs to be retied to prevent it from going further out, I don't know what's there. I wanna utilize the property, and I'll, I'll pay rent to do so, and then I'll try to start fixing things as I can. And as far as the large bulkhead, um, I, I had a, I had a friend of mine come down, that does some network, and he was mentioning to me that if I was, wanna build on that lot, all that concrete would have to come out.
Right.
So, I wanna, I wanna take it in small steps, and I'm hoping that I can solve the bulkhead issue for the time being. And that's where my goal is in the next five years, and then, right, you know, people, I guess you're, you know, I'm, I wanna try to do some improvements and make it a positive venture for myself.
The aesthetics will look good, as far as we drive up.
That's, that's one of the conversations we've had, this is slated to be one of the main entrances into the harbor at one point, and so there is a screening fence that's gonna be called for along, um, which, which he needs it for protection anyway, to keep cars from, you know, just taking that, that corner too quickly, and then also to protect from the dumping and things. There's a guard rail, the fence would basically be where the guardrail is to not only secure the property, but to screen those Conex boxes from view.
Also to add, uh, I should've brought it up earlier, Bill, wherever we get opportunity soon as possible, that little ramp, that dock, that little pier, the entrance, when you go on, that small one on the far end, it's broken.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it's got a real bad sag, and that main support is actually, I'm afraid. Yeah, take care of that.
We, we thought it had to go, Richard seems to think it's salvageable, but.
Well, I, I think when those pylons were driven, they didn't use a crane to drive them, they just use, um, water and air in order, and try to push them down the best ability what they could.
Right.
I, there's a lot of sway, and yes, it is, at this point, it's dangerous in order to walk on that, but I believe if the pylons were driven a little bit deeper into. But I believe if the pylons were driven a little bit deeper into the mud, they would be more secure. And then that dock could be utilized.
Right.
And right now, that's, that's not where I'm eyeing myself.
Now, I'm just looking at the city's perspective, liability is what I'm looking at.
And I agree with you as well. And I'm hoping that if I can get the fences, this is the first thing that I want to try to move on and try to secure it.
Okay.
And then that would prevent people from coming onto the property. And then I want to do like, and I don't know what they're called and I don't know fencing, but I'd like to do a little ear that goes off past the bulkhead.
Right. So nobody can go around?
Yeah, so if they can't, they can't go around the fence and the same on this side as well.
Correct.
Or utilize part of the grass area to prevent people from coming around. They'd have to get wet in order to get on the bulkhead.
The only item, and I haven't even discussed it with Richard yet, so we may have to do it after the meeting, is the gambling ship is ready. It needs a space to berth while they finish the tarpon shores area. And this was an item they looked at. So we'll have to see about when your lease can start and maybe they pay you the rent, however, however we end up working that out. Maybe, maybe revenue for you for a short period of time.
Maybe we, maybe we get enough to cover the dock.
Well, I mean, they just called us with that this morning, so I literally have not had an opportunity. But the ship is ready and so.
Well, and I want to move forward on it. And this is, this is, the dock that I've seen is almost, needs Pat's advice to figure it out. I was there to go that direction. But I think it's, I think it's a gem to this town. I, I've got so much appreciation of being here. I mean, I'm in, I live in the county across the street from ABU and I've been there for twenty-eight years. And I, just the fact that I've been, I started on this thing and returned back to it. I'm a part of this community and everybody else is as well, even though I, I work with Alan on the San Francisco County Navigation District and I've been one of the commissioners over there for a couple of years now. So you don't know me. This is, I'm trying to be, you know, a good citizen.
Yes, sir.
I can be good.
Well, you've been a very good citizen. I remember meeting you and we both had black hair.
Well, it started No Shave, No Members where this started. I'm a bit tired of it. That's why I don't grow up here.
It's looking good on you, Richard.
Well, that's all I have to say.
Yes, sir.
I hope that you let me in on this.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
So before we make a motion or anything, you were talking about that gambling ship may need a place to dock.
Once, once you lease to him, I mean, one of the things we'll have to work out in the contract is his ability to sublet. Right now, our contracts do not allow subletting without permission from the council. So I would ask that your, your motion allow, yeah, would allow a sublet. And Alan, you can help me with the language if you want to.
Yeah.
That, that would allow him to do that, if he so desires. I mean, if you guys enter and he's got, he's got plans to do the work, then obviously we'll find a different birthing place for the ship.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetto. Appreciate it.
But I'd like for you guys to give him the opportunity and it would probably cover his first year's rent.
And I do, I think also having made that ship there is going to bring a lot of enthusiasm when people drive by saying, look what's coming.
Absolutely.
So this is just my opinion. So item ten, do we hear a motion for approval or disapproval? What's the council's favor on this?
Will I make a motion that we approve the contract, long-term harbor lease agreement with Richard Palmetto, DVA, underwater services? What else am I going to add to that?
Subletting.
Subletting, okay.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sir, thank you very much.
Glad to have you back on the harbor, Richard.
Yes, sir.
We'll hash out the final terms of the contract during the week once we get with.
Appreciate it, sir. This will bring us to item number eleven, considering that on entering into a contract for design and pre-bill service, pre-bid services with LNV Engineering to complete water, road, and sewer service along Highland and Johnson as a part of phase one of our bond 2014.
You guys, this is phase one. Rhodes and Beasley are phase two. We are absolutely in critical mode stage right now. I see Nancy in the audience. There's several subdivision developments hinging on Highland having capacity. And Johnny and Eric are both here to answer questions, but they can tell you, we've been pushing very, very hard to have a shovel in the ground come March.
Sylvia, just one question, just on the, where it says background and findings, you have Highland and Johnson Rhodes.
Johnson Avenue.
It should be Johnson Avenue. I just want to make sure that we're not.
Yes, Johnson Avenue.
Sugar out the wrong Johnson.
No, no, no. Highland Avenue and Johnson Avenue. So if you guys have anything to add.
This has been long overdue.
Uh, yes. And preliminary cost estimates, in the beginning, I had thought we would do Highland-Johnson Rhodes and at least do paving on Beasley. You know, if we ran out, six million dollars is not a lot to go. But they've been able to tweak, 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 and I think we're going to get to all four. So the other one that's come into play that wasn't really into play is Ebert as well. We have to do something on Ebert. There's a lot of development going on there with really the equivalence of a paper street and a two-inch water line. So that's going to come into play as well. So that entire area of the town is going to gangbusters.
So I have a question. How long will this take?
They need to be done by December of next year. That shovel-in-the-ground march, they're told to be done by December of fifteen.
Eric Villarreal with LNV, thank you for having me.
December fifteenth, in a week.
Yes.
In a week.
No, we're anticipating having our bid documents and advertisements done by the end of March and having construction start, you know, shortly thereafter in April. And, you know, something like this, you know, nine to twelve months. So looking at the end of the year possibly, end of 2015.
Good deal.
Okay.
Is there any questions for anybody else in council? No?
Yay.
I already see it happening. Thank you, I don't. Okay, do I hear a motion for approval on item number eleven?
Will I make a motion that we enter into a contract for design and pre-bid services with LNV Engineering to complete water, road, and sewer services along Highland and Johnson Avenue as part of phase one of the bond of 2014?
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
You feel a little better now?
That's exciting.
Oh. We've been, we've been having lots of conference calls. He's been a figment of the imagination and voice on the other end of the line for a little while.
Could have faced you, yes.
Now, that's going to be a lot of excitement for everybody to actually read and finds out what's going on. All right, number twelve, city manager updates. Ms. Carrillo, it's all yours.
Uh, well, a couple of items in addition to what's on the screen. The water rate increase, we have not done a survey to tell you, Carol, if we're going to pass that on or we're going to absorb that. I don't know, given the fact that if we're in drought, obviously usage declines and we've got a budget based on an estimated revenue. That and also the pending utility bill from Gulf Marine, there's a lot of things at play before I can tell you we're going to pass on or absorb that utility rate increase or split the difference or some, something thereafter. On December fourth, we are having a ten sixty-nine meeting, all of those property owners. There is a grant that we received, half a million dollars that's in jeopardy if the folks don't sign up. That, that ends up connecting ten sixty-nine and makes the turn on Highland around the cemetery. And so it connects ten sixty-nine all the way down to commercial. It's very, very critical strategic for us. So we are feeding the neighborhood. We're sharing information, accurate information. There's a lot of misinformation out there and in hopes to get more people signed up in order for the grant to be finalized and be completed.
Where's the meeting going to be held at?
Uh, here, City Hall.
Here at City Hall.
We are also, on Saturday, December thirteenth, it's in your mailbox and it's going to be open to all of our boards and commissions and actually anyone who wants to attend. It is an elected officials, it's an ethics and planning workshop. Anne Bagley's our speaker. She has been with the Planning and Zoning Commission before. Now she gets an opportunity to meet everybody. It's roles, responsibilities, ethical, effective and ethical official, comprehensive plan, zoning, subdivision regulations, and any question related to planning. That's going to be here at City Hall from nine thirty to four. It is thirty dollars per person and it is lunch on your own. Employee Christmas dinner is slated for December the twelfth. We are going to take a two-hour lunch and Christmas exchange. We will be down to a skeleton crew. Everybody will be answering the phone, but a good portion of the staff will be at the civic center. Holiday hours of operation, you approved at the civic center and the library to modify their hours, so just letting everybody know that. We will also, for the holiday, we have some unused roll-offs as part of our Republic contract that we need to use. So on December twenty-seventh, which is the Saturday after Christmas, we will have eight roll-offs next door for trash.
Good deal.
Trash and bulking. Yes, I think they'll, I think they'll be filled up pretty quickly. We are also planning the, we had some money left over from the HEB donation, the Tri-County and the Allen-Samuels donation. So we are in contact with the school. HEB has stepped up and offered additional assistance in terms of a hot chocolate and a gift exchange for a hundred to a hundred and fifty of our most needy. The school tells me we have a very high homeless population and that's the target. We're going to try to assist those children. So we're aiming for December eleventh or December eighteenth at the civic center. Just depends on how soon we can get things tied up and the school can get us the list. And I'll let council know for sure the final date.
You said December twenty-seventh, the trash roll-off. Where are they going to be at again?
Uh, next door at the, at the old building inspection office.
Right across the street.
Yes, sir. And that's going to be from eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve.
That week, the people that have Monday, Thursday delivery are going to be affected, that have trash pickup Monday and Thursday. It's only going to be Monday pickup, so just letting folks know that if you were affected on Thanksgiving, you're going to be affected at Christmas. The other thing is we are having a holiday open house at the library Wednesday, December the tenth, from two to four. The library board invites you to a holiday open house, cookies and punch. Uh, two to four. And I'd invite the council to the employee Christmas dinner as well, if you guys can make it. December twelfth at eleven.
And you have Christmas here. What's that?
That's the children's Christmas. That's the children's Christmas toys. Eric says to warn you, the directors are cooking the main meal for the staff, so just FYI.
Am.
Am.
Free cook.
I thought you were pointing to Billy to do the cooking.
And I just do want to thank everybody who came out for the Thanksgiving meal. It was a great success. Some things we learned for next year. We were, I think, truly a story out of the Bible. We did plan to feed three hundred and fifty people and fed close to five hundred. Did not run out of food and actually sent food over to Metro Ministries.
Yeah, good deal.
Uh, it was a very, very good turnout. I think next year, the turnout will be even bigger and we'll, we'll be better prepared and better organized.
I wanted to add too, also the decorations and the cleanup job done around City Hall looks great, so I should pass that along.
I'm glad you mentioned that. I will. I'll pass that on to our street and our park crew. They're the ones that are working on it. The lights did arrive. There is, they'll be installed during the week. We have had a small glitch. The candy canes have not arrived. I don't know that they will arrive by Christmas. Should arrive shortly thereafter. The nativity set and everything that's going to go along the center median has arrived. So staff will be busy reinstalling the banners. All of the lights, if you've not watched the lights downtown, we're replacing all of the blue nautical lights. They're being replaced with a darker finish. That's easier for upkeep and will be touching up the paints and some of the blasting in the area, but those will have lit snowflakes on them throughout the downtown area, so. Please watch for the staff. Don't hit them in the bucket truck. That's what I have.
Good deal. Okay, with that, that brings us to item number thirteen. We're going to recess the open meeting at seven forty-eight and retire to a second session pursuant to chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, which would be item A, section five-five-one point oh seventy-two, deliberations regarding real estate property of Con Brown Harbor. If I don't see y'all after this, thank y'all for coming out this evening. Try to stay warm. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would suspect that the Hill Kids is going to transfer, which I think, I think will resolve some of the problems on that. Yeah, like getting drunk before they go to Alabama, getting drunk as hell. No, he'll transfer some. Well, you know, my wife keeps saying it. I said, Fatsy, I've been hearing that all my life. Wait till next year.